All right, so it looks like we have, uh, I'd say, uh, you know, twenty, thirty folks on.
Right.
This is, I'm John Kelly, and I'm in my office with Joe Tennyson. And, uh, the purpose of today is just to give you a quick little update on, um, coronavirus globally, which will, you know, Dr. Tennyson will do, and then I can talk a little bit about what we're doing at Marlboro Hospital and open to questions. I know, uh, I'll get on the call as well or come by so she can participate and answer her questions because she's certainly one of our resident expert as an infectious disease physician. Um, but I know all of your time is valuable, I greatly appreciate you signing in, but the purpose is just to make sure you get in touch and you understand what's going on. The one favor I'd ask you to do is just to mute your phones because, uh, otherwise there's lots of feedback and makes it hard for everyone to, uh, hear. I can mute everyone, but that, that makes it very difficult if someone asks a question, so I'd rather not do that. Um, so please, uh, if you mute, we should be in good shape. And, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and hand it over to Joe and let him, let him get started. Thank you.
So is Stephanie sending us the actual presentation because?
Yes, I had sent it to Tiffany a moment ago and, uh, she's on the phone.
Yeah, yes, I'm, I'm doing that right now.
Okay. So we'll see it come through, okay, thank you.
All right, uh, in advance, if I just break.
Viva just joined us as well, am I?
Hello.
That, I may have to sit here, click in that maybe. All right, so, uh, thank you, I'm just trying to figure out how to advance my slides on here.
There you go.
Just make it bigger. All right, so, um, the first slide is just a dashboard from Johns Hopkins that I discovered last night that was quite impressive as far as the, uh, monitoring the global, uh, numbers. And you can see that as of last evening, we're up to three hundred thirty-five thousand nine hundred seventy-four. But I think even more dramatic is the same, where's the left button for?
Right here, you just tell me when you want to advance.
Yeah, so advance. More dramatic is that that was last evening at about nine-thirty and this was nine-thirty this morning, three hundred fifty thousand. So, um, next slide. So that, um, what you can see is it took three months for this total case count to go from zero to one hundred thousand. To go from one hundred thousand to two hundred thousand, it took twelve days. And to go from two hundred thousand to three hundred thousand took three days. And I anticipate based on the growth we're looking at that it will hit four hundred thousand in about one day, maybe a day and a half.
Makes sense.
Yep. So this just shows you what, where we're getting some of the case fatality rate from. And you're hearing all kinds of different numbers in the media. This is from the World Health Organization Situation Report dated yesterday. And if you look at Korea, you see that, um, they have only a hundred four total deaths out of almost nine thousand to confirmed cases with a case fatality rate close to one point one percent. And that's a little higher than it actually was in the last few days. And then you look at it as a comparison, Italy, which is now reporting close to nine percent case fatality rate. So what's the differences? The real difference is South Korea is testing virtually everybody, every contact. They're doing contact tracing and forcing testing or requiring testing on everybody. Which means that the numbers we're getting from South Korea are probably closer to reality as far as true case fatality rate. Italy, much as the US was doing until recently and is still doing to some extent, was only testing those that were either admissible or seriously ill. So because that's the smaller pool of patients that are exposed or possibly positive, we're seeing a falsely high case fatality rate there. Iran's reporting seven point five and US, which was originally over three to four percent, um, is now down to one point three percent because of broader testing. Um, so in the end, this is likely to have a true case fatality rate around one percent, maybe a little bit less, which is between five and ten times seasonal flu. Go ahead. All right. So what do we know about it? We know, uh, most of this is from early Chinese data and I think a lot of these numbers are gonna get modified as we have more and more epidemiological information. But we know that the incubation period is about four days with an interquartile range of two to seven. Um, numbers have been quoted as high as, as low as two and as high as fourteen days. And so we're using a fourteen day quarantine period for exposed patients because that seems to be a safe outside limit. Um, fever is present in about seventy-seven to ninety-eight percent to patients. And again, this is according to a fairly small earlier Chinese study. Um, but it was only present in forty-four percent of patients at hospitalization. So that means that fever may not be a great, uh, screening tool because patients requiring hospitalization who ended up testing positive, um, many of them did not have fever at the time of hospitalization. Cough is present in forty-six to eighty-two percent, uh, myalgia fatigue in eleven to fifty-two percent and shortness of breath in three to thirty-one percent. Of patients requiring-
Here's one of the topsters in here, please open.
Hello?
Beer, then pizza and wine as well.
Okay. So, um, of those requiring hospitalization, about twenty to thirty percent of them have required ICU. And of the patients going to the ICU, between half and three-quarters required mechanical ventilation. One of the more telling numbers I've seen quoted is, um, that about fifty percent of those requiring mechanical ventilation die. So what does that mean for us and this overlay? Um, I had this, uh, apologize for the overlay there. Essentially, it means that we don't have the space in the US healthcare system to manage this. And that's why our strategy of social distancing and the idea, what you hear in the media about flattening the curve, is to distribute the number of patients we have over a longer period of time and that's the goal of social distancing. One of the problems with ICU patients is that the mean, and Viva, correct me if I've got the numbers wrong because I think they're newer numbers, but I was hearing mean time on event, once you're intubated, is like seven, six weeks, somewhere around there.
I think it really varies depending on the patient, um, how sick they were when they came in.
So the, the problem is that these, these patients are not as typical with a lot of other patients we intubate. They don't stay intubated for a few days, better and cough, they stay intubated for a long time. Which means our, our ICU beds are going to turn over as we would normally expect and it's a significant burden on the system. So, um, this is another paper, um, from earlier this month, MMWR just talked about the secondary attack rate, which kind of gives you some ideas about how many people you expect are going to get this. And the secondary attack rate from close contacts, which is the people we're talking about, you pass within six feet and you're coughing or sneezing and such, those patients, it's about one percent. But household members, it's ten percent. And if you see the confidence interval, that's really three to thirty percent. And obviously, this is a small number study with a confidence interval that big. But, um, we can expect that household members, once it gets into a household, there's going to be a large number of patients in that household that get ill. And so, uh, what we're doing here?
And so, Dr. Sharma, certainly chime in, but, uh, at any point you'd like. So my, kind of the things I wanted to go through is just talk about testing a little bit and, you know, how we've, how we've come along in the last, uh, two weeks. It's, as everyone, testing started off very, very slowly while we were limited to tests. They were going out to California, they were, they were literally taking, uh, you know, five to seven days to get back. And over the weekend, that, that finally broke for us and now-
That has, that has been very helpful in terms of turnaround time.
We're now getting, you know, Marlboro, Quest in Marlboro, uh, right here has a huge, uh, lab facility. And now they are taking our tests and we're able to get that turnaround time in close to twelve hours. So the patients that are in the hospital or hospitalized or that we need, you know, very fast turnaround patients, we can send them directly to Quest in Marlboro. The testing that we're doing as outpatient, you know, the drive-through testing that we're doing, uh, is getting sent to Missouri. And that is, we're, we're, I'm still waiting for the first test results back from that. We started it last Thursday, I believe, on the nineteenth, and I, we have no test results back. But I imagine, once we start, they start flowing, they will, they will be quicker as well. So it was a big ramp-up process of this.
Does anyone have any questions on testing?
Are, are we going to test the frontline medical staff and the doctors?
If they're symptomatic, yes, so there's guidelines for testing, right? So we are currently not testing asymptomatic contacts. We are testing patients, patients and based on that actually need testing. Because you have to remember, we have limited media and we're not just test everybody. If there is a contact, uh, very close contact with a positive patient, then we are recommending monitoring for now.
One of the reasons, we honestly don't know what a negative test means in an asymptomatic person. Because we don't know how long it goes between exposure to a positive test. So if we get a negative test, it might be in that period before you've turned positive and we don't know if it's truly negative.
Yeah, so the sensitivity really goes up with symptoms. Somebody had a question, are we forty-four percent, we have fever, is it a bad screening test? But we don't use fever alone.
No.
Fever, new cough, or high-risk contact. So we look at a few things before deciding. Only a fever is not a screen for patients admitted. But I hear you, if we are testing employees, you know, for temperature, um, that's probably the best we can do, so that's why we are doing it.
And we're also, when we're screening employees, we're also asking them about symptoms. The questionnaire will include symptom questions as well.
Shortness of breath, cough.
Right.
I think the shortness of breath is very key because most of the patients do complain of subjective shortness of breath, more than what you can see. It's disproportionate to their numbers. I've seen that a lot in patients who actually turn out positive. The dyspnea seems to be a part.
All right, uh, just keep moving along here. So Employee Health, there's a quick update that we do have a kind of a robust employee health system in process and that has been systemized, you know, for all of the hospitals in the, in the UMass group system, just to make sure we're following all the, the guidelines. And it gets updated like everything with COVID, pretty, pretty much every few days. And at the end of last week, there was a, an additional update that allows, you know, employees and healthcare workers that have been in contact with positive patients to be able to continue to work as long as they're not symptomatic. But we do ask that everyone report any, you know, feeling ill, not, uh, you know, fever, cough, shortness of breath, anything that seems out of the usual to Employee Health. Because we do want to make sure that we're, we're screening, uh, everyone as quickly as possible. There have been, you know, at the Medical Center, there have been a couple of exposures related to providers. So it, it is happening and, uh, being that you all have so much contact with, with patients that it can be, it's a very significant exposure. Um, but please, at any time you have any questions about that, just call our, our Employee Health and we can certainly talk to you about that.
And there's a twenty-four-seven number available for Employee Health where they can leave a message if, if you're overnight.
Supplies, so, uh, there's lots of conversations and, uh, that, around supplies, but I will, I will focus on masks, um, right now. And I, there's a slide here that, in the next slide talks about kind of what the change in masks that we're gonna go over. Um, so I'm not gonna, I'll reserve that for, for when that slide pops up. But in short, uh, there's definitely a mask shortage, that's, that's real news, that's very true. Um, as a system, is what we're trying to do, do is balance what we have for available masks to meet the patient needs. So for the very high-risk patients, we are reserving the, the fit test masks for, you know, the procedures that are gonna generate airborne particles. And we want to make sure that, you know, that the staff, you know, has those, has those for now and in a month when we need them. And then for the rest of the staff, you know, and when they're dealing with the PUI patients or the COVID, positive COVID patients, is that there is another protocol that will still keep them safe, but it's not necessarily all-around fit testing masks. And that, that's on the following slide and that's, that's being drawn out and educated to staff and all the hospital employees today. Another big piece that will be coming today is that anyone that is, we're going to be working in a clinical area, will be have, have to wear a face mask as soon as they pretty much enter the hospital. And that goes back to making sure that the provider or the care, the care person, the staff in the hospital, if they're sick, that they're not, you know, giving it to the, to everyone else around them. And then once again, that goes back to really kind of isolating and making sure that we're not, we're not spreading the disease amongst ourselves. Um, I don't know of any other comments on supplies, no?
So there is a system-wide initiative about sterilizing the masks. And we are going to have more information shortly. But, uh, the idea is that the N-95 mask, which we are really having a trouble with in terms of supplies, uh, could be reused with UV light sterilization. Um, I'll come on that, but that's actually going to be very helpful and will ease our short supply for.
All right.
Viva?
Yes.
Viva, this is Charlie.
Yes, Charlie.
I'm getting questions from nursing homes about nebulizers, any advice?
So, uh, nebulizers technically means aerosolization. So if you can use the metered dose inhalers instead of nebulizers, that's what we are doing. For PUI suspect patients, we are moving to MDIs from nebulizers.
So this is, I'll tell you, there's a, there's a big shortage of the MDIs, so I'm not sure if the nursing-
Okay, well, I've written blanket orders to that effect.
And there's probably a lot of folks who are on nebs who really don't need them, so I would take another look at everybody's record and discontinue them on anybody who really doesn't have a COPD or asthma diagnosis.
And also, if it's a PUI, then definitely, if you have any suspicion, then try to avoid nebs.
Fine, thank you.
Thank you for the question. All right, uh, screening staff and no visitors. So, uh, last week, we did go to a no visitor policy, which, uh, has been successful and we continue to, you know, to, not allow visitors. We will make certain exceptions if, if it really has to come up, you know, if it's an end-of-life issue and we feel that someone could visit someone safely, we'll, we will consider it. But overall, there's no, no visitors. Uh, the big one here that I want to mention to you is, uh, screening of staff. Starting tomorrow morning at, uh, six-thirty, we will go down to two exits, two entrances in the hospital, excuse me. All of the exits will be open, but, uh, two entrances. One will be the rear employee entrance for anyone that parks in the back. The rest will be the main hospital entrance. The main hospital entrance will be open twenty-four hours, uh, you know, seven days a week. Uh, and there'll be someone there to, to screen you. And the majority of the screening is, uh, just a temperature check. There are some patients that you'll walk by and if you would, uh, answer yes to any of them, you have to let the screener know, but it's temperature checking. And I'd ask that you kind of bear with us through this process and we will adjust it and, as needed. Um, but this is something that, uh, you know, we as an organization feel it's important, but it's also been mandated by the Department of Public Health to do. Um, and, you know, they've said that it, we were allowed to have one entrance to the hospital. So we're allowing two because it's just based on our parking and this would make sense. So, uh, all of the other entrances, you will not be able to get in with your ID, um, because it's going to be, going to be locked. And, uh, I'll apologize ahead of time for the inconvenience, but I want to make sure that we get this out as much as possible. Any questions on that?
I, I would add, um, there's a lot of the medical staff that has keys to, um, the Leahy entrance and we need to use that.
Yeah, I don't think it works, does it?
Doesn't work anymore, it's all badge now.
It's all, it's all badge, yeah.
No, it was.
The key, okay, all right.
I don't think that they changed it out, I think that the key is still working there.
Okay. All right, well, we'll, we'll, we'll take it and, you know, the first ask would be that does everyone just respect the,
Yes.
the, the main entrance, um, in, in screening, it's for every-
Maybe a sign should be put on that door, that physicians shouldn't enter through that door.
Yes, that's a good idea, thank you. All right, uh, we just, uh, I'll touch on these quickly, you know, they, we do have it in the emergency department, we have an alternative care site, which Joe will talk about in a minute, outside of the emergency department. Inpatient-wise, Granger One is our, uh, primary site where all of our, uh, patients under investigation, our positive COVID patients go unless they're needing ICU level of care. Um, all the rooms there have been made negative pressure. So that's, uh, that's been successful and the, we've gotten a kind of a core group of staff to, to work down there. Uh, ambulatory and outpatient, all of that has been, uh, you know, shut off now, uh, except for, you know, emergent procedures that are getting done upstairs in the operating room or people that have, you know, lumps in their breasts that need a mammogram and/or an ultrasound. But, uh, this has been a, a big change for us and it's, you know, obviously impacts all of you, impacts a lot of our staff, impacts the patients out there, so, uh, but once again, that was also, uh, pushed from the, the entire social distancing and the not having people come into a healthcare facility or be out and around that, that don't need to be. And, um, we're monitoring this closely and, uh, you know, we'll, we'll, I have no update on when this will, will change as of, as of right now. And any questions on that?
Somebody's asking a question.
Okay, there is another quick, oh, go ahead, let's, let's just go back to the, wanna, we have a few questions that are written in, let's just allow us one moment and we'll scroll through them here and get them answered in the order, uh. All right, so that was the temperature one here.
We did that already.
Covered that.
Do a mask, yeah.
We covered that, you talked about the tent.
So there's a question about UV ta, uh, UV light, you know, UV masks we talked about. There's a question about the tent, testing the tent. If we, I think we've answered those, if we haven't, please, uh, please speak up. And then the next one is, uh, what about using O-three CPAP cleaners, like to clean sterilized N-95 masks?
I don't think we've had any discussion about that.
That's not feasible because that's pollution and it would, um, you can't get the masks wet, they have to be dry sterilized.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, so somebody's asking about antimicrobials or immune modulators in patients with ARDS. So we have a protocol for treating patients with confirmed COVID who are, uh, ill, critically ill, and which includes hydroxychloroquine and remdesivir. Um, the remdesivir is a controlled use drug, so we actually have one patient who, uh, has been approved for it. We are waiting for the shipment. So there's a protocol that we are following for that, uh, not for any patient with ARDS, but specific patients with, uh, confirmed COVID nineteen infection and respiratory distress related to that.
There was a question about masks and if, um, if we're going to wear it. I, right now, yes, we do have enough masks, uh, but all of the masks, the majority of our mask rules are, are being made around how do we best utilize the mass population we have. I, I talked to them a minute ago, so I just don't know if, if there's a more specific question. Uh, and I just want to keep moving everyone's time. Uh, and that's Dr. Robinson's response.
Uh, I just want to add, as good Dr. Tennyson mentioned, there is some, uh, data controversial but about NSAIDs not being helpful, like ibuprofen, Motrin, uh, to stay away from them if it's a COVID, uh, patient. Um, I think if there are alternatives that can be used, we should just do that for now. We're gonna get more data studies.
And then, uh, can a UV light be used to disinfect, uh, personal equipment? I, I don't know the answer to that.
I don't know the answer.
So stethoscopes are relatively easy to clean with antiviral wipes and that's what we've been doing. We're, um, our disposable, um, precaution stethoscopes, uh, that supply ran out a while ago, so we're reusing those already, uh, and wiping them down. I've used my own stethoscope and wiped it down on exiting the rooms on a regular basis. Um, I, they, those can get wet, so you can use antiviral stuff on them.
Yeah, same thing with phones, you can wipe them down, most phones are okay. I wipe mine down every day with our antivirus, you know.
There's a couple of quick things and we'll, we'll pass it back over to Joe. So daily briefings, just to let everyone know, we are, you know, we, we speak every day at the end of the day with, uh, the, the management team up here at Health Alliance, you know, with Dr. Tennyson, Dr. Sharma, Dr. Robinson are frequently attending those meetings as well. So we are, we pay a lot of attention, uh, to making sure we're communicating and, and working with our, everyone here at the hospital. As well as, uh, you know, I will borderline endless phone calls, uh, with the system about this and, and planning. And really, it's been, uh, you know, all hands on deck and kind of preparing, preparing for this. And, you know, we, we, for amount, the amount of patients that are in the hospital, it's, uh, it's crazy for the amount of work that everyone is, is doing. And we really just want to make sure that we're prepared moving forward as, as we get, you know, sicker patients and more of the, the COVID patients in the hospital.
Okay, the next question from Dr. Laudiza is, what is the negative predictive value of the test? And as we are discontinuing isolation with a negative test? So actually, the positive predictive value is more than ninety percent. So I would say eight to ten percent, uh, negative value, but we are not doing that. Actually, if there is a patient who we suspect has COVID, even if they have a negative test, we are retesting them. And that is a determination that I make, or Padma Barry, um, consults with me and we make. So any patient who is a COVID suspect cannot be taken off precautions unless, um, communicated with, um, infection control. Uh, and, uh, we have to be very mindful of this, otherwise it creates a lot of confusion because no test is perfect. So we have to take the clinical into view also. For example, we actually have a patient on Granger One right now who we are retesting because I still think he's a high risk. Uh, so it's good when we see a negative, but we have to take it in conjunction with clinical.
All right, so moving on with, uh, what we're doing, the next big step, uh, is, many people will know that we had a different PPE policy here as compared to the Medical Center. And as the Medical Center's supplies of N-95s have run down, we are now instituting an aligned system policy for this. This was distributed just prior to the weekend to the Medical Center. Um, we will be implementing that probably fully today. Uh, what we're waiting on essentially is the arrival of some of the masks that are prescribed to be here. So essentially, what we're doing here is very similar to what we were doing here at Marlboro all along. And that is, we have three risk situations. And risk level one is patients who are undergoing high-risk situations, high-risk procedures such as intubation, nebulization, or positive pressure ventilation such as BiPAP or CPAP. Those patients should be cared for by providers wearing fit-tested N-95s or PAPers. And I have finally started to see some of my bearded ED docs shaving in order to get fit tested. Yep. Um, because PAPER hoods are in even shorter supply than are N-95.
All right, applaud the ED docs, that's a great step forward.
Yes, um, PPE level C is the easiest one to discuss next, that's routine care. And we started on Friday with every single person working in the emergency department environment, will be wearing a surgical mask at all times. And now it sounds like that is going to be hospital-wide.
Can I talk to one of the attendings down there?
That's, that's a background, I think. Please just make sure you're muted. Um, and then the more controversial is PPE mask level B. And this is what you do for routine PUI or COVID-positive, are not undergoing-
I'm sending a patient over from the stress lab, uh, his name is Roy Falby, F-A-L-B-Y.
We're just gonna mute.
He is fifty-five, um, it's your hypertension, doesn't have some short-
Okay, so, um, our, our practice here throughout this event has been that those patients are managed with, um, surgical masks. At the recommendation and, and in effort to align with what the Medical Center's doing and have a single system policy, we will be using non-fit-tested N-95 masks for those patients. Uh, and that's medical-grade preferred, but if we have some of the donated industrial-grade N-95s, um, that's also usable. And they've determined based on mask size that if you are already fit-tested to eighteen sixty, which is the larger of the two three M sizes, then, um, you would wear the Gerson mask during these times. Have an ample supply of Gersons. Were fit-tested to the three eighteen sixty small, um, it's recommended that you will wear the unfit-tested Wilson mask. It is the Wilson mask we're currently waiting to get applied here at Marlboro. So this is just replacing the surgical masks or standard medical masks and using the unfit-tested N-95s. There's two reasons for that. One is, the thought is that it does provide a slightly better seal than the medical mask. But the other reason is that, um, we're trying to preserve the other masks. So as we're going to level C, wearing a mask all the time, we want to preserve the supply of those and that supply is also limited. So we're trying to find a way to, uh, preserve that supply at the same time. So the difficulties we've had with alignment with a different process here versus a process at the Medical Center will be going away. And we will be fully aligned and, um, trying to have a single system policy.
Some people had questions about homemade masks. I would, uh, probably discourage that for now till we have enough supply of masks, uh, which we are going, you know, we've been promised by the system, we are all going to have at least for the near future enough masks to tide us by. So just use the hospital masks, please.
Right. Specifically, the World Health Organization strongly discourages using cloth masks of any kind. It may be where we're left in the end if we run out of all these other options, but that would be a last-ditch thing for me.
Right.
Um, so talking about our alternative treatment space, up on the slide is a diagram of our waiting room, which has been converted to an ten ba, ten-bed treatment space. Our goal is patients arriving to the ED will go and be greeted outside the security office and basically ask, are, you know, is it respiratory? And quick triage, are they ESI level one or two, which is critical patients? And if it's any respiratory complaint, fever, or ESI one or two, they're brought to the back where we have closed rooms. If it's an ESI three, four, or five, and four and five are what you can think of as urgent care or fast-track level, and three is sort of abdominal pains and other standard emergency department fare, routine chest pains, et cetera. Those patients would all be triaged into the alternative treatment space, our former waiting room. As we, right now, our volume has been very, very low. Our percentage of respiratory complaints has been climbing, although it had a little dip in the last few days. And our overall volume is very low and we're only using the standard ED treatment space. As this ramps up, we may get to the point where we need additional providers to help us with this lower acuity area. And we may be asking for volunteers from the medical staff who would be willing to come in and be managing the abdominal pains and the ankle sprains and minor suturing, that sort of thing. So that's something we're gonna be looking for in the future. We're not quite at that stage yet. And then to our drive-up testing, so there, there's a map here of what our process is. The gravel lot over on, as you face the building over on the right side is a staging area. Patients arrive, pull into that area, and they are communicated through closed windows with very nice laminated signs. I know this process well because I was a participant in this process yesterday, um, as a patient. And, uh, once they go through the screening, they, they're found to be in one of two lanes, to one of two processes. The first is they have an order existing by their PCP or employee health or ordering provider. Um, the other process is people who are arriving with no existing order. If they have no existing order, they have to go through a longer phone screening process when they get registered. And they're registered by phone with the windows up the whole time. During that, we do screening questions which, uh, answer all the questions for the DPH's criteria for testing. If you do not meet one of those criteria, one through eight, we tell you, you do not qualify for testing right now and you are, um, asked to leave. Okay? Um, the first question on that, very importantly, is do you need to be seen in the ED? Are you short of breath or anything? We do an MTLA screen. If you do meet one of the criteria, then you are still tested based on a standing order. Uh, so one by one, the cars are called down the driveway in front of the hospital. They stop outside our tent, which is right next to the main entrance. Uh, the window is rolled down and a provider in full PPE, uh, will swab their throat. Uh, they're, it's a nasopharyngeal swab. And then as soon as that's done, they're handed some discharge instructions and they're released and they drive right out. They never have to exit the hospital and, um, I mean, they never have to exit the car and do any contamination where we have to decontaminate a room or space. So, uh, this process works very well. We've been testing on average fifteen to thirty patients a day. Uh, and it's running one of the new hours, Joe.
Ten to five.
Ten to, ten to three or?
Ten to five.
It's come out, uh, we, we'll, I can send it out. It's on the Marlboro Hospital webpage. It's, we're sending it out again.
I, I sent it out already this morning.
Okay, perfect.
To all providers. Yeah.
Thank you, Tiffany.
And, uh, yeah, I'll let Viva.
So somebody asked a question, will there be a move to send drive-up tests to Marlboro Quest as opposed to Viracor Missouri? So the problem is that I think we need to, and things may change later, but as of now, uh, the Viracor test that we do in the tent does not require a medium. We use saline for it. So that's why we are able to do multiple tests because there's a fear of running out of the media. This Quest uses the viral media for testing. So that's why we need to conserve that for patients who we need, uh, relatively quicker turnaround times. Um, we are hoping that the turnaround time from Missouri will also improve once their system is all set up and running well. Uh, but, uh, that's, you know, where we are right now.
I got it.
Yeah. John has very fancy electronic equipment.
That's the last slide.
That's the last slide. All right.
Oh, okay.
So.
Point of care test from?
We could open it up to questions. There's one or two questions here that we can, um.
The point of care COVID test, yeah. Uh, we don't, don't know yet. But I, from what I have read in literature, it does not have a very high sensitivity. So, um, mostly.
Much like the problem we had with our prior rapid flus.
Kind of like that. Seventy percent is what I've read in some literature.
So any, any other questions by anyone? I, I'm just gonna unmute everyone 'cause I don't know if, uh, some of you are muted, some of you weren't. But, uh, I'm gonna unmute anyone. Just if there's any questions, please, please ask them.
Hi, eh, Viva.
Yes.
Um, one, one other question that, you know, people ask is, you, you, US physicians are, are you vectors? You are going into hospitals and getting exposed to all kinds of patients? Uh, you don't know who's COVID among them, them? And now you're coming into social situations. So should we completely avoid social contacts with non-physician colleagues?
I think you, uh, so two things. So the first thing is it's not just physicians in hospitals who are preservators of any infection. It's out this pandemic. I, I would have an objection to people saying that. The second thing is that, yeah, so this is, I'm all for it. Social distancing is the only way we will flatten the curve. So the less people, the less we socialize, the more we stay at home. Uh, I think that's really going to be critical. And I just want people to understand why we are doing this. I think some don't know something too, especially the younger, healthier people feel, why are we doing this? You know, what is, and we, we are all going to get it anyways. So the idea is to have less people ill at the same time. Because that's to be very hard for our healthcare system. So we want to spread it out. We want to spread it out so we can actually manage it as opposed to a situation like it where everybody's sick at the same time. And, you know, the healthcare system is just not equipped to handle that. So.
Thank you. That is very, that's very valuable.
I would say it, you could get it anywhere. It's not just the hospital.
Okay. The, the other question is what, what has the governor said today? He just said something, stay, stay at home, but not really stay at home. What is, that may not be for you.
There was a lot of, uh, you know, appeals to the governor. And, uh, this is sort of like not a shutdown, but a strong advise to stay at home unless you absolutely need to go out. I don't know how strictly it's being enforced yet. We'll find out. Uh, but the message is to only get, step out of the house if you absolutely need to, to get, you know, say, get supplies or if you are an essential healthcare worker to go, you know, you're going, um, or a firefighter, all the essential jobs. Um, grocery store, um, so I, I need to actually find out. I know in Canada, what they are doing is they're spacing the, uh, consumers six feet apart. One person pulls up to buy something, the other one has to be six feet away, then pull up. That might be a smart move too. I don't know if the stores here have got onto it.
The only problem is I, I read the governor's directive and the list of what is essential is so long that technically, everybody seems to be essential.
No, but look at that. I mean, he's keeping the medical marijuana stores open, he's keeping the alcohol stores open.
So we can't solve all those problems unfortunately. Uh, try, we can do our part, you know. Our part in social distance, if each one of us does it, maybe some good will come out of it. That's our.
So we have, we have one minute left. So if there's any, uh, any questions we have. I think I got it answered, uh, by, uh, one of your other colleagues. So terrific. Well, I wanna, I wanna thank everyone for your time and I hope this was helpful. Uh, if I've done it correctly, we've recorded it and I will, uh, work with Tiffany to get it posted on the hub. So if anyone wanted to, uh, to refer back, but you can. But thank you all very much.
And just please be patient. The listings are changing by the minute. So we are also changing recommendations, but it's all for the good. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.